We held on the unceded judicial territory of this meeting of First Nations. And our district itself also resides on the territories of Stininas and Stiles. I want to acknowledge that the Coast Service people of this land have been the stewards, caregivers of these territories from time immemorial, and I'm so grateful that we get to be able to live here, to work, and to enjoy this beautiful land. And I raise my hands to these people and thank them. Are there any additions, additions or change in order to the agenda? So if not, can I get a motion to approve the agenda? All the question mark? Let the agenda be approved and seconded by Tom? All those in favor? Motion carried. Add football minutes. The minutes from the regular board of education meeting held on August 27th, 2025 be adopted. Yes, we will. Oh, yeah, seconded by, yeah. All those in favor? Motion is carried. Section 72, parentheses, three reports. Add a section 72, parentheses, three report from the closed board of education meeting on August 27th, 2025, and a special closed board meeting on September 10th, 2025 be received. Tanya, seconded by Tim. All those in favor? Motion is carried. Announcements and reminders. Well, tomorrow, we have the Terry Fox celebration in our district, the final day, the big ending. It leaves at 1:00 at one o'clock. I just want to thank the district staff, the principals, the teachers, and all the kids who have participated with such enthusiasm, and even the trustees for even running in the first, on the first day. Really impressive. On September 30th, it's National Day for Chief and Reconciliation. I hope that people can find the time to reflect on our journey of reconciliation or attending an event or something. Strategic Directions Committee meetings October 8th, 2025. Our next Board of Education meeting is October 22nd, 2025. Statutory holiday, October 13th, it's Thanksgiving. And there's a non-instructional day of October 24th, 2025. And now moving along, we have presentations, and I'm going to turn this over to our Secretary of Treasure, Mark Walsh.
Great, thank you, Chair. And so this evening, the board has been asked, and we are obligated to send the audited financial, approved audited financial statements to the ministry. However, prior to the passage of that, the board will be hearing from KPMGR auditors and having the opportunity to ask questions. And just for the public's awareness, the boards also have the opportunity to ask questions of the auditors in a closed session as well. Just again, for transparency's sake, that's because in the event that there's issues associated with individuals, that would be to be, it'll be subject to privacy, but appropriate for close, that's why I would come, that's changed. So, Lenora?
Okay. So, it looks like myself and Masut may be here to respond to any specific questions associated with, with the audit, if we might have had our signals crossed with respect to the auditors. So the audit report, again, is available to the board along with the financial statements. It was a clean audit, there was no concerns raised with respect to our controls or with respect to any fraudulent activity or any transactions of concern raised by the audit. Would also add that the auditors are very appreciative of the, our finance team, who worked so darn hard over the summer to get this complete in time for our obligations here in September. So I guess I will, myself and Masut, will answer any questions that might arise with respect to the, the audit report. However, again, the motion is there for approval and the auditors have raised in the instance.
Any questions? Okay.
Just before.
Dr. H. L. B. Watson?
Sure. But the Board of Education of District Number 68, Anima Ladiesmith, may be successful to be here and approve the 2024-2025 audited financial statements?
Seconded for that, great. Would you like to motivate it?
Um, sure, no, I appreciated, appreciated the, the presentation earlier, and it seemed like it's really clear, and it's somebody that we've turned to over the district for years, I'm, I'm assuming, so again, it just looked like it was pretty clear and clean, so it gets easier to prove, so thank you.
So? Questions? All those in favor of the motion? Motion is approved. The pass, salute.
I do apologize for inclusion.
Okay. As you, as you mentioned, we did get our chance to ask questions, KPMR page meeting, closed meeting, so. Correspondence. Office of the Omnibus Person Quarterly Reports, it was October 1st, December 31st, 2024, January 1st, March 31st, 2025, and April 1st, June 30th, 2025. We have a motion attached to this. That the Board of Education of School District Number 68, Anima Ladiesmith, refer the attached quarterly Omnibus, Omnibus Person Reports to be received and filed.
Salute.
Okay, Tom's waiting it, the secondary, they have. All those in favor? Motion has passed. Now, moving on to item 12, Strategic Directions Committee Reports, we have a number of motions. The surplus allocation. Mars, or Tom, would I, would you like to reach the motion?
Sure. Are we ready, Chair?
Yeah.
At the Board, oh, just trying to make it bigger, yeah, don't bother, it's okay. At the Board of Education of School District Number 68, Anima Ladiesmith, empower the superintendent to draw up to $1.75 million of unrestricted surplus to address priorities and support of the strategic plan as outlined in the Strategic Directions Committee Action Sheet dated September 10th, 2025.
Seconded, Mark? Ready? Do we have any questions in regards to this motion? Tom?
Oh, sure enough. It's not a question, it's a comment. I'll be supporting this motion. We've had a really fulsome discussion at our Strategic Directions Committee meeting about what this is really going to constitute, and I want to say that there's been a lot of thought and heart put into this plan. And I just want to thank staff for all their hard work in finding very critical areas within our system in which to put these, allocating these resources. I really, really appreciate that, and I agree with all of it, so thank you very much.
I just wanted to sort of, I, I thank you, Shantel. Tom, I should have actually let you motivate her, I'm sorry.
It's okay, well, I'm saying.
Okay. Tanya?
Thank you. I wanted to say that I did, although I was away from the meeting on the last week, I did watch the meeting, and I really appreciated everyone's questions and discussion, and I've gone back and forth on the whole issue. I, I respect what our representative from QB stated around the idea of bumping this up to 2 million to try to assist our EAs more, and reluctantly, I can't do that. I am there to support the motion as written because of the reasons brought up around the risks of what we do turn out a little bit short. I do though have, want to confirm something from my own understanding, and because someone else asked me about this, this budget that we, surplus that we were passing here, is it statutory, is there a statutory requirement that we get this done by September 30th? Through this chair?
Through this, the statutory requirement is already complete with the last motion, so if the, if the board didn't pass this recommendation, then it would just sit in a straightened surplus.
That's good, okay. I mean, I am still going to support it. I do think we need to, it brought to mind that we do need to have more conversations with our partner groups about how we prioritize through our strat plan, how we address some of these things. I, I think that it also brought to mind for me also some discussions about some advocacy, because the point that Jeff made about training for EAs and how VAs aren't enough for some of these complex kids is accurate, and what it speaks to is needing to continue to push the ministry around standards in our programming, programs that train EAs, and standards of what they're being taught, so that they are getting enough time to, and, and training around these, these complex, these more complex kids, but that's not something we can fix at this level. It is something we have to be aware of, the future for our conversations with BCST and with the government. So with that said, I will be supporting the motion.
Tom?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Yeah, I'm confident with the inputs that Superintendent has recommended, that there are actually QB hours within that, within those dollars, and so they may not be labeled as such, but I will, I do think this will materialize into more hours and more QB people, so I appreciate that, because we are in service. I also just wanted to take a moment and appreciate the work that our staff has done to put us in this fairly unique position. There are districts across the province who are struggling with all these same issues, but because of the prudent work of Mark and Tanya and other people whose names I don't yet know, we're able to do something and contribute those dollars back into the classrooms. So I am just incredibly grateful and a little bit humbled to be sitting in such a unique position in the district, and I look forward to seeing this impact on our students.
Yeah, I, I would just comment that it was pretty exciting for me to see the numbers, we're able to, to use this much money and, and put it back into the classroom, and it's always been a, it's been my, my mission since I was elected, that we, we got more supports at the ground level, and I'm seeing that happen, and I'm seeing the superintendent and staff respond, and like you said, I'm just incredibly grateful for Secretary of Treasure, for Tanya, for doing incredible work amongst other people, because we do need the supports in the classroom, and the, the large allocation of money, I think that it's very, it's, it's been outlined in a very clever way, because we're going to respond to needs as they arise, and I think that's really important, rather than just coming up with a thing or a number of people, we can respond to needs as they arise, I think that's really a, a, a good move. All right. I see there's no other comments, so I'll call the question. Um. All those in favor? Motion has passed. And 12, item 12.2, Multi-Year Financial Plan. That the Board of Education of School District Number 68, Anima Ladiesmith, approved the recommended 2025-26 multi-year financial plan. Okay, time is seconded by? Great.
Just to say that staff have done very good work here. I think that it's very important that we have multi, that we do this multi-year planning, as it helps us to be prepared and, and gives us a certain baseline of where we're at, what we hope to expect, and so that we can, we can be more strategic and, you know, engage in more long-term thinking, so kudos to staff, and I, I think we need to.
That's, that's, Tom? Anybody else want to comment on this? Okay. Oh, questions, then? All those in favor? Spots. Item 12.3, Exempt Compensation Reporting. Going to ask Mark Robinson, would you read this motion, please?
Sure. That the Board of Education of School District Number 68, Anima Ladiesmith, received the executive compensation report. As information, direct the board chair to sign an attestation letter acknowledging compensation paid to executive staff during the 2024-2025 fiscal year.
Seconded. Do you want to move this motion?
It's mandated by the ministry, so there's, there's a motion.
All right, call the question. All those in favor? Passed. 12.4, Environmental Stewardship and Sustainability Advisory Committee. Oh, great, I'll need this motion.
Sure. That the Board of Education of School District Number 68, Anima Ladiesmith, approved the Environmental Stewardship and Sustainability Advisory Committee's Work Plan and Priorities for 2025-26 school year, that the revised terms and reference for the committee be approved.
Yeah. Right, would you like to approve this motion?
Sure, I'm just pleased to see this voted here, and I would thank the support of staff and our superintendent and the committee for helping us put this forward with the hopes that there would be a career path forward for this coming school year in terms of a work plan for the committees.
Questions? All question, then? All those in favor? She has phone office. Item 12.5, Framework for Enhancing Student Learning Reports. Enhancing, about? Sure. That the Board of Education of School District Number 68, Anima Ladiesmith, approved the 2024-2025 Framework for Enhancing Student Learning Report and submit to the Ministry of Education and Childcare by September 30th, 2025. Seconded.
Yeah, sure. I think this report showed us a lot of areas of success, but also a lot of areas of need for growth, and I'm very excited that through our strategic plan, we have put in place our priorities that very clearly state that we are focusing on numeracy and literacy in this district, and it is a priority, and I'm confident that with the allocation of surplus dollars and also the addition of our Director of Priority Learners, that we can do some excellent work to ensure that our students are successful in this district in the areas of numeracy and literacy, so very grateful for this work that we're being done, that's being done right now.
Yes. Just briefly, Tanya, you know? Just to say that I did also watch this conversation, and I was extremely grateful to staff and quality of report and the openness around the areas where we are concerned and where we know we need to improve. It was a very fruitful conversation, and I appreciated all the comments around different ways of assessing kids, and I would concur that I'm not super comfortable over relying on the NPSA, knowing how politicized that document has become, and just, et cetera. I also realize that we are not in a position really to challenge it too much right now because of things to do with BCSTA and FNS and the expectations around that, so we're going to have to continue to think about how we're going to navigate those types of waters, but overall, we know the work we need to do, we, I'm extremely confident people will be happy doing it, and I appreciate the quality of the report and appreciate your step.
Yeah, I'll just comment, I'm, I'm going to just sort of segue into what you were saying about the assessment piece, you know, I know that using just one piece of data is not a great way to be able to reflect on student learning, we have capability of things to be able to look at, and what really, what's excited me is just the discussion with our senior management team of how, you know, they're looking at creating some, some assessment tools within the district and being able to track student report cards and things like that to be all a part of assessing where a student's at, because one test doesn't necessarily reveal your best indication of where a student's at, we need to use a variety of assessment tools, so I think that's great, so thank you. All right, I'll call the question, and doesn't look like anybody else's. All those in favor? Motion has passed. All right, so I'm moving on to item 13, Senior Staff Reports, Robin Brady.
Thank you, James. I really appreciate it. It is the 30th of September. It's been an excellent start to the school year, and I really just want to acknowledge a lot of staff here, and I wanted to start with the School Board Office. I know that Pete Sable will be doing afternooth facilities with Mark as well as Zaya with regard to what's being done, but the amount of work that was accomplished over the, the summer was incredible to prepare our schools for the entry of all of our learners, so I really wanted to do a shout out for those folks. Also, we have centralized registration, and so we have a team down there as well who receive families and students with regard to registering them in schools, and so a lot of that work is very relational in nature, and I'm very pleased with the work that we do around that as well. FNS, they do an incredible job in terms of keeping us focused and keeping our budget on track, so very impressed with them. HR also as well, hiring staff that we need in all of our schools, and then the schools themselves, the work that they've been doing this past month is incredible, events of our key actions, the strategic plan, so they're highly aware, are proud to actually align their plans with the district plans and the administrative situations, so very pleased with that as well. We know that when kids and families walk through the schools, and when they get there, their clerical staff are there to greet them, their principals, teachers, support staff, indigenous support workers, child and family support workers, it's just incredible with a sophisticated group of students that have really got us off to a good start. So I just want to acknowledge everyone here at the, at the district office. But then I want to talk a little bit about Terry Fox Run. We had an amazing kickoff yesterday, starting at Ladiesmith Secondary School, with a couple of our trustees, running attendance there, but this is the 45-year mark and of Terry Fox Run, and this was done, I think, I believe, 20 years ago, and Jackie Coolen, our Elementary Assistant Superintendent, came to me last year and said, I think it was 20 years ago, and I think we should do it again. And so we're working through that process. Yesterday, it started ladies in secondary with the ladies with firing on the students. It's gone, I think halfway or two-thirds around the district today. Tomorrow, we will have a closing ceremony with maybe some of our student runners at Bevman at 1:15, and so it's quite an incredible feat, and I'm very, very just proud of the staff and everyone who's out there supporting this great event. I do know that when I was speaking with the principal of Ladiesmith Secondary, they had a goal of raising about $1,200 for the event, before the event even just kicked off, they were already up to $2,600 of donations, so very comfortable. One school, one start, and so we're making our way to the district, so pretty incredible there. And then just lastly, we had a wonderful opening at Brotherford Elementary, and it was incredible, and we had some students participating in that opening, great speeches by our, by our board chair, along with the principal, also Jackie Coolen, and so what a great opportunity, and I think we also have some great class as well, where it's just a pleasure to open a school that is receiving now, I think upwards of 207 learners. So great start to the school year, and that's really about my effort. Thank you.
And thank you, Robin. Moving on to 13.2, turn this over to Jenny Robinson. She's our Executive Director of Communications.
Belong, Grow, Thrive. This is our new district headline, and as many of us can see, we shared it already with our community of learners, our staff, and their families as well through our district newsletter. It also is now featured prominently on our new district website, which launched just over a week ago, and it looks very lovely thanks to our work created by our own Lisa Johnson. So it's just a reminder of how we got here. Here, there we go. Here's how we got. Yep. Here's how we got here. Belong, Grow, Thrive. Back in April, we sent out a postcard template, greetings from the nine ladies in public schools to all of our schools, one for every single student to fill out and share with us, we're going to school in the nine ladies in public schools, meant to them, and we got more than 4,000 postcards back, and this is just a tiny, tiny fraction, showing the creativity, the words, the messages, and everything that was shared with us to help us develop a new district timeline. So we looked at all of these cards and we put them into categories such as friendship, belonging, recess, that was very popular, growth, success, learning, that, you name it, our kids had ideas on everything, and it's fantastic. And I'll just highlight that this is the last time you'll see the postcards, they've now been turned into artwork, that's going to be throughout the deck, here in the boardroom, and that will be coming soon, and then we have a lot more, so I think maybe like new flooring, or etc., etc. So that was a really exciting process, and really allowed us to hear from thousands of our own students about what motivated them, what excited them on that coming to school here. So from that, we came up with the possible tagline options, and as you know, we shared options with our staff and our community partners, we also shared a link with families, and then finally, a link with all of you for the top four choices. So why do we have a tagline, and why did we come up with the final tagline of Belong, Grow, Thrive? Because the tagline helps remind us of what is important to our community and the goals set out in our strategic plan, so it gives a re bringing it all together. So we'll talk about our strategic plan and our key actions of learning in a moment, and this time to our tagline, but belong, it's the spirit of belonging cultivated by relationships and trust. To belong means you're welcome and appreciated for who you are. We aspire to have every student and staff member feel connected to others and the world around. Grow. For students, growing needs to embrace a well-grounded education that inspires them to discover their potential. For staffs, growing involves developing professionally and deepening our knowledge and enhance the education system to support student learning. Thrive. Only when we belong and grow can we truly thrive in our learning journeys, in our well-being, and in life. Thriving needs to do well or flourish. It's about being fulfilled, confident, and engaged as a responsible citizen, the local territory, and global community. So these three words of our strategic plan, of our tagline, support the strategic plan that was developed by our Board of Education. Really, it's the daily reminder, when we think of it in a very small snippet, of what the strategic plan is calling us all to do and focus on, and what's important to our learners as well, and our staff. So obviously, our vision, inclusive and equitable learning communities where every individual thrives, that was the existing vision, and our mission is committed to multiple purposes of happiness and success for all students, students who will naturally reflect and innovate within a safe, equitable, and responsible learning environment that develops their academic, social, and emotional growth and artistic well-being. And again, our strategic plan goals of student success, student and employee wellness, truth and reconciliation, belong, grow, and thrive, touch, respond, all of those areas. So it comes together in this beautiful graphic, again, of Belong, Grow, Thrive, our three goals in the white space area, and then from those three goals, each year are key actions and focus areas in all time together. As you can see there, the, the key actions, student success, student and employee wellness, and the key actions in truth and reconciliation, and the key actions are there, are focus areas for this year. That's belong. So that's belong, grow, and thrive. And it will be our tagline. It's somewhat evergreen for a while. It's a process to create a new tagline, and you feel this one really fits our community because it is developed by our community and inspired especially by our learners and our staff. So you will be seeing it in many places and many iterations, but the long road thrive is how we long grown thrive moving forward.
Thank you very much, Jillian. I just want to say I appreciate all the work that you have put into this to bring this all together. I mean, result, I think is just really beautiful. Thank you very much. Is there any other comments from Jesse's?
Just about applauding the interview. Yeah, if I'm late, I really appreciate what you've alluded to, that we've taken the time to find that our message that comes from, you know, the least of us apparently, or maybe the most of us are children. And that just can't be wrong, right? So well done.
It's seen other comments. Item thirteen point three, Robin Brady, Superintendent, Amendment to Policy Two O Eight, Board Committees and Annual Work Plan. Thank you very much. In this background sheet, you'll take note that student voice is important for all of us. And I think that the board put a motion a couple of years ago about having a student voice committee. And it was, last year was the inaugural year. Even this year, we're enhancing those meetings to actually occur once a month rather than just maybe even four times a year. And so this is an opportunity for our secondary schools and maybe an opportunity, maybe of seeing community students as well, to bring forward their ideas around what they believe about their schooling, maybe a number of things. But in that conversation with sport, we heard, or I've heard, that there was interest in really providing leadership opportunities for kids to have their voice shared, maybe even bringing them into the governance model in terms of being able to come to this table to provide an opportunity to hear from them, maybe a representative of our student voice circle. So in this action sheet or the recommendation, it's around changing your policy related to Two O Eight Board Committees and the Annual Work Plan. Because it's in relation to bringing in a student from student voice to coming into your strategic directions meeting and being a real-time participant in terms of bringing forward their ideas. So just like some of our union partners, even I think other people who come to strategic directions, they have the opportunity to raise their hand and bring forward some of their ideas. And so this would provide that opportunity virtually at this point in time. But also in addition to that, it's also revising and tweaking the language. Because before it was around our learning for leaders, but now we have an Indigenous Educational Council, and that's tweaking that language to bring their, to formalize their role there as well for Strategic Directions Committee. So there's a recommendation we're going to consider. Is there anyone that would like to make that recommendation? Okay. Greg?
Sorry, are we having questions? I suppose.
Oh, we can, oh, sorry, we can do questions first, yeah, absolutely. I think Mark has some.
Oh, I just froze my hand in your response to your question. I'd love to read it.
Did you have a question?
Yeah, thank you. So through you to staff, so it's my understanding that policy two O eight is out for consultation now. And we have a policy two point ten, which is about how we're supposed to rate and amend our policies. And I'm just wondering if you could speak to how you would see this fitting in with policy two point ten?
Chair, thank you super tough. So actually, that's directly related to two point ten, the reason it's coming the way that it's coming this evening. And that's because two point, sorry, not two point, that's an error in drafting. Two hundred and eight. Oh, sorry. So policy two point two, two hundred and eight is out for consultation right now. And so the thirty days is actually technically up, and it could have come back here. We haven't had no feedback. And so the determination was, is rather than have a comeback pass, because the main aspect of that was the permanence of the Strategic Directions Committee, is rather than have it come back and then have this recommendation come forward and go for consultation a second time. But frankly, we haven't heard a lot of consultation. Is what we will do is work with Jillian, if the board passes this, to say, well, there's actually now essentially two things that we're asking for your thoughts on community. And so one is the permanence of the Strategic Directions Committee, and one is to change the Strategic Directions Committee to include a membership, the voice about the most languages of the back with respect to students. And so it'll come back in about thirty days, and so that's the idea. So the board will get a report of the consultation on two O eight that will include both aspects. I don't think there's going to be a lot of comment on the I E C because it's changing. It's more of a housekeeping, whereas the other ones it's subsequent to. So that was the thinking behind the process. Perfect. Thank you.
Okay. I think about the students, and I'm very excited that we would be inviting them to our meetings. And I know for myself, I already knew how to meet in a meeting, but this was still a lot, a big learning curve. Because every institution is different in how they conduct their meetings. I'm thinking about what are our plans for the student themselves? Is there going to be some kind of training and stuff like that that they can take to kind of learn how to to attend our meetings, you know? Make them comfortable and familiar with our processes.
To the chair. Myself and the Director of Publications will be working with the trustees who want to attend us with the student voice group. I think that that's kind of what we would want to do behind the scenes, maybe even with the principal, depending on who the students are and who has an interest in coming to such a formal meeting in terms of that. But I think that we'd have to give them some background understanding, let them know well in advance, here's the agenda items, maybe even give them an opportunity to have a dialogue, maybe with an adult who could actually support them around maybe some of the questions that they may have. And so that's the work we do with students.
That's fantastic. Thank you very much.
I guess, kind of along the lines, I'm just wondering about the, I guess, the selection of the students. That kind of would come down to one student attending this, like, is there, is there a platform?
Through the student voice, we would be asking for volunteers. And I think that it may not be one, it might be maybe two or three. Because I think that when we work with students, we always know that they may need a partner, maybe they'll need a little bit of support. Maybe there's somebody who's a thinker, but maybe not a speaker. And so we would be asking of the student voice students who would be interested in this opportunity. And so they might even want to take turns. So we'll just gauge it from them in terms of inviting their participation, supporting them. And in my experience, the students at secondary who are volunteering to be part of student voice, they have something to say. So I think it's not necessarily one, it can be driven by that student voice.
Yeah. I'm just going to kind of piggyback on what Tim was saying. Is what my understanding is there's, it hasn't been flushed out exactly what this is going to look like. Potentially having, you know, one person or rotates or two people or potentially even three people. So if we're beginning to have those types of discussions, how does that look for our other partner groups when they have one representative that is able to attend these meetings? Do we foresee that there might be any sort of conversations that need to be had when they're not feeling that their voice isn't equally as represented, represented with just one person versus, you know, and at this point, undetermined about the students being able to.
I just had to respond. I'm assuming that that's part of the consultation process that's going out with regard to that matter. But I also believe that when you have students come to the table, I think that's part of that training, part of that leadership. It's going to take some work. And in my experience, when kids come into an adult-like form of meeting, there's probably less set than more than more set. So I think it's really around making sure that we do our diligence around supporting them, guiding them in terms of their initial involvement.
Absolutely. And I first of all, fully support this, and I think it's fantastic. I will say, speaking as a kid who was in the room, you know, was into this kind of stuff, and would love this opportunity back then, make sure that when the adults that are in the room are talking to the kids about what they want, that you keep, keep, let them do something wrong, and they know, you know, if you give them the opportunity to tell you how they think it should work, they have ideas, you know, and in it, there's nothing worse than being in grade ten, eleven, twelve, whatever, and being given this opportunity, but having it be pokiny or feeling like you're not really, you're only getting to say or speaking a way that that they tell you to kind of thing, like. We have to also give a little trust in them if we're really going to do this. You have to give a little trust in these kids that they will have thoughts and that they can figure out how to collaborate with us on how to do this. You know, we do have to explain them of our parameters and our rules, and some of the things that are non-negotiables, like voting. Our rules and all that stuff, but within that, those parameters, I think you'd be surprised what they can accomplish.
No other questions, staff?
I don't think there is.
The Board of Education of the School District Number Sixty-eight, and I'm Alani Smith, direct the superintendent to include changes to policy two point zero eight. Or. Sorry?
It says two O eight.
There's two O eight. Okay. Board committees, thank you. Board committees and annual work plan to include I E C representation and student representation on the Strategic Directions Committee for final approval at the October twenty twenty five board meeting. And that a student and a member of the I E C be invited to the Strategic Directions Meeting in October prior to final consideration of the changes.
On second segment.
There's no piece of motions that we've done over the last three years that makes me more excited. This is, this is my dream come true for the last thirty-two years since I was a kid on student council. I'm happy. My bucket's filled. I trust, completely trust staff that will get it right. I trust our partners would accept that we might have two or three students involved. Kids, they're kids, they need help in class sometimes, and kids feel more supported when they went for peers. You know, this is about educational value and student empowerment. It brings meaningful student voice, which reinforces the idea that education is for students, not just about them, but it's for them, and this is part of the process. It empowers students to become good citizens and future leaders through real-world democratic participation, which we really need these days. It provides experience, hands-on experience for our kids, at which they can bring back to their peers. It brings perspective and it brings relevance. Students experience the direct impact of strategic decisions that we adults make. And excluding them kind of risks, you know, blind spots and blind spots in the planning. Students can offer current relevant insights on classroom realities that we do not touch day to day. Technology use, school culture, mental health. This promotes responsible decision-making by ensuring that strategies align with student needs and lived experiences, which they all do. And finally, and most importantly, it builds a culture in our school system of a shared responsibility and respect for diverse voices, which this day and age, we've seen in the news, is very important. It's a learning tool that our kids need to learn now to respect each other's differences. For that reason alone, I'm supporting this. I want to thank staff for bringing this forward, Rob in particular. And I'll leave it at that, and I'll hear other of my colleagues who think it should speak. Thank you so much.
All right.
Okay, thank you, Chair. So I will reiterate what Mark already said. Lots of good rationale and support the policy, the recommendation for the policy. What I will say is, you know, I feel that we're here to serve students, and this is a great way, I feel, to help to better serve our students in our capacity. My question is more around the process and if our process, and I think what I heard was we're going to go up for consultation for about thirty days. Our next Strategic Directions Committee is on October eighth. That's not even fourteen days. So for the policy to be adopted, it would have to come back to the board, which is October the twenty-second. So I'm just, I maybe look to staff as to whether or not we need an amendment to the motion to change October to November to follow through with the, with the sort of amendment process that I think said that we were going to do.
Reiterate, the intention was essentially for the board to be authorizing and to act outside of the policy transparently because it's passing a motion for the October meeting. And then in the event that the passage of the motion didn't happen, then obviously it would cease at that time. There's a, that was the intent. So that, you know, somewhat anticipating the likely passage of the policy. But that was why the recommended motion was tracked the way it's drafted. So it could say November, and then it doesn't need to be a temporary change to the way that we act. That's certainly an option.
Okay, so thanks for that clarification. I don't foresee there being concerns over this change, so I'm hopeful that there isn't. But I, you know, based on that, I'll still support the policy. I think it would have been cleaner if we were to have a bit longer to do the consultation, but we're doing it outside of the policy in hopes that there won't be concerns raised in the community. Okay, that's all. Thank you.
Yeah, and then.
I'm just wondering, just based on the conversations about potentially not just being a student, if the wording needs to be changed to say, you know, a selection of students from the student voice committee rather than an individual? Because we all agree, it seems like that it's not an issue, but just for clarity purposes so that it's clear that it could potentially be more.
Yeah, that makes sense. So the way, the way in the language is drafted is for it to be one. What I, what I would perhaps recommend is wait for the feedback, which will include from the students, because they haven't really actually been asked a question yet from the first student voice circle. And then in the event that the feedback is, there needs to be more flexed more, and the superintendent makes that determination. It's not, it wouldn't be an inappropriate change at the last minute. It's, well, or the board can make a determination of whether that's a significant enough change that it needs additional consultation.
Out of ten?
Mine's kind of dumb, but I'm just wondering about the word acronym I E C. I'm wondering if it's like, does it need to be written out in, in such a, like, an actual, in a motion? Because I don't know if everybody knows what an I E C actually stands for, so just language. Why not be an issue at all if it's just an internal thing, but for public purposes, not everybody knows what I E C is, so.
So if I need, the I E C, it needs to be part of our Strategic Directions Committee. I mean, that's, to me, that's important. What I'm kind of seeing here, though, is more like in October, having them come to the October eighth meeting is kind of more. is kind of more, a kind of a test run, kind of like a meet and greet or you know, because there's not much time between now and then, like, if we were to pass this resolution to find students and and get them up to speed and stuff like that. So could we kind of see it in that way, in that respect as well? That it will give them a taste of what it's like. I mean, they might end up saying, no, none of us want to do this, and what are you talking about, sort of thing, and we have to change the thing again. Which, that's their voice, but I highly doubt to say that. I'm just seeing it more in that direction. Is that kind of what we're sort of thinking, having them come to the October eighth meeting?
Thank you. I really appreciate all of the adjustments, and I I just wonder if there maybe shouldn't be maybe a founding amendment on this motion around expanding I E C to Indigenous Educational Council. I'm also thinking too that October eighth is really right around the corner, and it's going to be a bit of a challenge to you know, as students who get getting into school and underweight, that perhaps it might be just a good suggestion to make the change to November, make the change to I E C, and a selection of students on on this recommendation to give us a chance to actually have some more time. We have not had a student voice meeting yet with our learners. Principals are asking kids to come forward to be part of student circle, student voice circle. So I'm thinking that, just based on all of those suggestions, that there might need to be some adjustments.
I propose an amendment, please.
Sure.
Can we, I guess I'll re-read it. That's okay. Karen, it's going to basically read the same with few expansions. That the Board of Education of School District Number sixty-eight, Naomi Lady Smith, direct the superintendent to include changes to policy two oh eight. Board committees and annual work plan to include the indigenous, include Indigenous Education Councils and councils, representation and student representation on the Strategic Directions Committee for final approval at the November twenty twenty-five board meeting. And that a student
A selection.
And that a selection of, thank you, Naomi, students and a member of the Indigenous Education Council be invited to the Strategic Direction meeting in November prior to final consideration of the changes.
Clarification. Final approval is still going to be October twenty twenty-five board. Is, was that the intention, not November? With the Education Council being invited to the Strategic Directions in November, that would be the month change.
That's correct. If I confirm it through the chair to staff, will we have what we need in time for October approval? Thank you, Karen. So that's fine.
Want to add a second amendment? Mark?
Yes.
I just want to comment that.
I think, I think we're all on the same page, both in terms of wanting to see this go forward. And I think the amendment primarily just provides some clarification and allows us the time we need to ensure that we have a consultation process and to ensure that there's time for the Student Voice Council to get together and to you know, designate or get volunteers to come to our first meeting in November. And maybe even some training if there's an opportunity, rather than rushing for November and maybe not all the pieces being in place.
Follow the question on the amended motion. On the amendments to the motions, thank you. I'll hold the favor. So now we go back to the motion as amended. But the Board of Education of School District sixty-eight, Naomi Lady Smith, direct the superintendent to include changes to policy two oh eight. Board committees and annual work plan to include Indigenous Education Council representation and student representation on the Strategic Directions Committee for final approval at the November two thousand twenty-five, October two thousand twenty-five board meeting. And that a student and a member of the Indigenous Education, sorry, that a selection of students and a member of the Indigenous Education Council be invited to the Strategic Directions Meeting in November prior to final consideration of the changes.
Point of order, I can do if the motion was already done and then amended, so. My current.
I'm just on the table. Didn't need a second.
Okay.
It's clear for this discussion.
Okay, further discussion on this?
Just colloquially, I, with regards to having more than one student in attendance, I unless my memory is corrected, I do remember times when we've had more than one Q P member or one teacher coming to the Business Committee or Education Committee to support their colleagues. So I, there is not out of precedence. So just go back and kindly say, I'm happy.
Yeah, I just want a question for information. This, the invitation for the I E C to join our Strategic Directions Committee, is that stipulated in Bill forty? Or is that something that we're doing beyond the dictates of the board? You can take it away. I'm just curious.
All questions? All those in favor of the motion? All right, moving on to thirteen point four. Mark and Pete Sabo.
Great, thank you, Chair. So the next forty-five minutes or so.
It's a difficult day.
So we wanted us just to take a moment to recognize the this, the work over the summer. We're going to start with facilities and then we're going to move to I T. And so when when we were chatting about what the work product looks like for the board, to just tell them everything we do over the the summer, that's great. We're not going to talk about it. You've got the memo, you've got the memo in in front of you, but just to highlight that the various areas that we have in the school district and the level of expertise that that we have to be able to 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 deliver. There's some, there's some great projects here that you've heard about, there's some great projects that you will never have heard about. And so, and Pete, what have you done first lately? That's but, you know, we want to express just appreciation for that, for our folks and, you know, opening Rutherford, we have representation there. Reminder that our Q P staff did the vast majority of the work, as they do in this district more generally. Pete's got a short PowerPoint, just highlighting a couple of the of the interesting projects to maybe note. I'll ask Pete to maybe speak just a little bit about that as we go and then answer any questions that that you have, of course, just. That's very, very strong summer with some some great inputs, new programs, tree safety. We had staff come up to us and so we're really excited. Can we try to support some new initiatives? And that that's there before you as well. You're going to see the first of our in-house roofing, and my picture might not actually align with where we did it, but a a few of those type of projects also. So Pete, if you want to add or show the PowerPoint and add us, you know.
Thank you. I do have a few thank yous myself to this morning or today, and then I'll get to a short slideshow, less than forty-five. All right, so thank you. And it's a pleasure to be here to represent the work of the over two hundred facilities department in Florence. Tonight, it's via information sheets, very unpaid, one sixty-five, and then a short slideshow. I'd like to thank the board, Ms. Gray and Mr. Walsh, for their ongoing support for our diverse operations and project works. Lots going on all the time at facilities. I want to thank all the facility staff who make additional efforts every day to complete their work, along with an eye on improvements in communication and safety. And a big shout out to all the other departments that support us, finance, purchasing, I T, H R, learning services, who provide us with the supports and guidance we need to succeed. There are many unseen stories of staff's commitment to our students' evidence in the list of the works. I'm happy to answer your questions as I go and I apologize in advance for the inevitable acronyms that show up in the action sheet and will show up in the slideshow. And if you have any questions about that, let me know. People loves their acronyms. So Mr. Walsh spoke to this a little bit. We had a substantial body of work in getting prepared to reopen Rutherford. Staff identified a number of years ago when we decided to reopen, when the board decided to reopen, that more work needed to be done at Rutherford. And so we we worked to get a ministry project of approximately eight hundred thousand, and then we combined other district funds, A F G and other operating funds, to complete a package of work that was deemed to be the highest value for the staff and students at Rutherford. There's more to be done, but we feel we've made a significant impact. Especially part of the work that we've done by our staff who actually did the design, so we didn't have an architect on board. We had staff consult and do the documents. And we worked very closely with learning services to make sure that we were looking at the highest value works. This work was also passed on to our capital implementation department. So as Mr. Walsh said, a lot of the work was done by our staff and minimizing the amount of trades we have outside trades. Just an example of some of the studies and improvements we made in the whatever. This is a slide. This is the MCFD-funded district-led design and district-constructed childcare center on the Tuculus site. And so we're especially proud of this work and our close working relationship with the with the nation on what we believe is a successful project for all. Again, this project was done by our completed, the construction was completed by our construction implementation department. In conjunction with S F N, we expanded the scope of the external work, the site work. So it's only a little bit a little bit, a few elements that not every childcare studio exterior gets, and S F N assisted us with funding to provide them. Wellington moved portable to Wellington. That's a space provision project. We often do space provision projects for the school and an accessible door in Wellington. And these are little bits of projects, large projects, small projects that move along. We had a great opportunity to negotiate an agreement for pickup drop off with the Pleasant Valley Social Center. And so we got that in place just before September, and that met their need of making sure that we had insurance in place if anything should happen, and it solidified the use of that parking as what we call a drive-to-five location in the active school travel language. We also provided supports for the fifty-five-plus games and community schools programs over the summer. A lot of that was done through our Rhythm Department. At Randers and Ridge, we made a couple of very significant upgrades. We completed the outdoor learning, which you'll see at a number of schools, and we rebuilt the surface of a playfield, which I'm told is going to open next week.
That's on the public, Pete.
Along with construction and other improvements, we also do basic maintenance in our operations department. So we're, we just clean, we do a deep clean of all of our schools and make sure they're in top form for the return of students. We had a couple of significant building envelope programs that are reaching the end of our ministry mandated B C O envelope program. And so we did the Banshee at Barsby, and we did a significant amount of work at Forest Park. The last building envelope project we hope not to do, and that's at N A S D D. And then, and if the ministry's official building program is over, we're shifting to an internal A F G delivered building envelope program. Miscellaneous project delivered, school funded. We also did a significant amount of I T infrastructure upgrades. So you can see a cabinet that a air-conditioned cabinet to keep these equipment safe and sound operating. We did some minor improvement projects in our workshop. So we did a beam reinforcement. We had a sagging beam. So there are some projects are quite small and they're identified. And then we dug up the yard, putting in phase one of our E V infrastructure. So lots of pipes for future charging stations so we can charge. We have an infrastructure for ten of our yellow fleet, and we're expanding it to twenty. And we're also going to add some fast chargers so that we can charge buses up quicker, or if there's something wrong with a particular charger. And this will significantly help us advance our our yellow fleet. Phase two should be complete by February twenty-six. We had a chance to do some active school travel upgrades, so in support of our active school travel program completed in Uplands, there were a couple of recommendations. Accessible crosswalks, making things more conspicuous, as well as some bike racks to assistance. We had two preschools with boiler failures, complete failures. And so we had to upgrade the boilers at Dufferin and Forest Park, and they were hurry-up emergency projects thrown into the mix. And so they're, they were completing for September. We also had an externally funded parking lot expansion through the I C Y funding. Somebody wants to know the acronym, so I'm not sure. Yeah. And and so that was completed and been opened for September. We did, I'm going to add something that Mr. Walsh spoke about, and that's we did three portable roofs at Dover Bay with our forces. And so we've done roofs before with our forces, but now we're making more deliberate steps into identifying trades that we can bring in-house and that we can do more of. And we're also looking at very closely at flooring, so that we can contract less flooring, deliver more flooring, build stuff. Maybe there's a particular type of flooring that's suitable in schools, that's less training required to to install that type of thing. At Hammond Bay, you did some basic ground improvements in the gardens. Dover Bay, we did bike racks, wood bank with S F N, in coordination with S F N, we did another wood backdrop. And this is interesting. C O P is Continuous Optimization Program. And this slide represents the work of our energy management department, with the work of the upgrades actually done a year ago. But they analyzed this summer, the metrics. So they did the measurement and verification of the savings of the work we did. So we upgraded the D B C system and we did some improvements in efficiencies. And you can see here that the orange shows a reduction in the left-hand side in gas use, and on the right-hand side in electricity use. So it's not, it's for our energy department, it's not good enough to do the work. We have to prove it worked, which is excellent for us. And then we did an upgrade at Mountain View as part of the boiler upgrade. And this is a little slide that shows protective graphics that we see when we're trying to control the system so that they're plain and straightforward, showing the equipment. It indicates what's running, what's not running, helps us better diagnosis, diagnose the issues and keep the equipment running continuously for student health and safety. I'm going to pause just over ten minutes, I think. And if there's any further questions, I'd be happy.
All right, so Naomi stepped out of the room just for a moment, folks. So stepping up for her for a moment, so any questions?
Thanks, temporary chair. Through you to Pete. Thank you so much for your presentation. I have a question. I saw a number of bike racks going through and it was really exciting to see that. My question is, Pleasant Valley was slated to have a new bike rack. I'm wondering where we're at of that, as they, have they got that yet? I'm on the Dover Bay, Christine Moore, so I don't know.
Well, Pleasant Valley did get bike rack upgrade, and they got a cover, they got a cover for their bike rack as part of a joint project by the city of Nanimal. So the city of Nanimal funded the cover, and the district installed the racks. And we're actually looking at some sort of unveiling in the next few weeks.
Like a grand opening?
If you, if.
Okay.
Working to see on that note.
Thanks.
Yeah, focusing on some of the great environmental advances, you're able to break.
Yeah, focusing on some of the great environmental advances you're able to break for us here. Thank you for persisting with the charging challenges and no bringing in. Pete has been, has brought some obstacles, but I appreciate your persistence with that. I'm curious about boiler replacements. Do we have a better alternative to replacing boilers? And to me, they sound like old technology. Am I just wrong about that? Is there a way to make boilers as efficient as some of our modern heating and systems?
Yeah. We have a couple of systems that might illustrate that. So we have a high-efficiency boiler at Cedar Secondary. And then there's a boiler loom. And then there's heat pumps that reheat and provide conditioning in the classroom. So there's 30-plus heat pumps in the school. So it's a very complicated system, but it's not a straightforward boiler system. So the boiler is used very infrequently because we have the heat pumps taking heat out of the loop and putting heat into the loop. And, and so those are options that we look at when there's an opportunity. Going back and retrofitting existing schools, that can be difficult with respect to the electrical service to put heat pumps in. But essentially, to answer your question, high-efficiency boilers combined with a heat pump system.
And so when you mentioned the two retrofits were done urgently, that's under that kind of schematic, that's that model?
Well, we attempted to, we always look when we're doing upgrades, we always look at all the energy efficiency options we can incorporate, given the funding and the timing, etc. And unfortunately, in this case, the best we could do was high-efficiency boilers. So we took atmospheric boilers that's running at 60% and we put high-efficiency boilers in that they're over 90%. So there is a greenhouse gas savings to build like hardwired system. So unfortunately, looking at electric heat pumps for Dufferin or the other school just weren't available in the time or funding.
Yeah, the last renewable that I want to focus on, they're doing a great job in, is our local workers. So I really appreciate, you know, the in-house staff showing up to do this work. That's our ultimate renewable resource. There's just random questions now on the same.
Shangel, I just want to thank Facilities for all their hard work. I mean, this is quite a list for just summertime. It's, you know, you know, you know, but you don't really know until you start to list it all out and stuff like that. And I just want to say thank you for taking such great care of our facilities. Because it is really, if we didn't have facilities, we wouldn't have a space for our staff to teach or our students. And so it's highly integral to making our system work properly. It falls into our wellness. If we don't have well-run facilities, our staff doesn't feel so great and neither do our students either, right? So thank you very much for all of this hard work. And thank you to the 200-plus people that work in facilities, that work hard every day, that care so much about making it just right. I did talk to some facilities folks when I was touring Rutherford and stuff. And it smelled, I remember Mark Walsh was saying, it smells like a new school. And that is really hard to do. So thank you to everybody for making it such a beautiful place for students to learn.
You know, Naomi, through your staff. So thanks, Pete, for your presentation. Thank you to you and all the staff who worked so hard to keep schools maintained and all the different things that you do that's so important. Something that someone said earlier today got me thinking, we have a new website. And the question is, do we communicate all the good work that we're doing on our facilities to the public in any way? Because I feel like there's so much that goes on behind the scenes that most people don't realize is actually being invested back into their school, back into the system that goes to support students. So just curious, do we, we have space on our website? Or is there a way that we communicate out to the public on the work that we're doing in this area?
I'll make a comment. I'll say, I don't think Facilities does a really good job of doing that. We're focused more on the work and they're happy to help, happy to help and contribute more to that external communication. We have been making more efforts on internal communication through department with schools. And there, I think there's probably room for improvement.
Through the chair, yes, we do have a webpage on our website. At the beginning of the school year, it's on the old website. We shared a whole bunch of photos about the work that had gone over the summer. And that was shared in our internal and external newsletters as well to show, again, exactly that to our families that a whole lot of work's happening over the summer to get your sites ready for your children.
Yeah, thanks, Pete. I appreciate the presentation, looking at all the good work that's happening. I remember early on, it was, it came up. Still going to play that new card for a bit longer, but anyways, just it was brought up that we could, as a trustee, you could visit the facilities and get a tour along those lines. I think it's something I would be interested in doing because of the big operation it is. It would be great to possibly tour facilities as a trustee. So just to see what you guys do and how it's all kind of done. And yeah, is that a possibility? I don't know if that's a possibility, but that'd be great. Thank you.
Just with the chair, yes, we have it organized that we will have something for the trustees very soon to come into that tour.
Well, that's new to me. It's not surprise. Okay, awesome.
Any other questions?
See, you have, thanks for the very detailed presentation. Appreciate it. And I too will echo what Shangel said about how incredibly new Rutherford looked and smelled. And the grounds were incredible too. I know the principal shared with me how fast and efficient that the facilities team were that came in there. It was quite impressive. Thank you very much. Moving on to the next item, 13.5.
Great. Thank you, Chair. Emily, and welcome Zayad Narcher, our Director of IT. And just to want to, again, express appreciation for the vast amount of work that's happened in our IT department as well. So this year, we decided to incorporate summer work of IT. Because again, sometimes it's easier to picture a foregetting finished or a field getting redone than it is to picture some of the backend work that our IT department is doing and not would function without it. And when you look through the vast amount of projects and training and information and things that are happening with IT, you think, you know, HR is not going to function with it. Finance is not going to function with it. Schools are not going to function without it. And so again, you know, Zayad, I'm going to ask you a couple of words. Of course, I said, don't need to do a PowerPoint. Maybe we're going to point out some things in the room, but just joking, but I want to express appreciation to you and your teams. But again, if you want to highlight a couple of things and trustees might have questions about what is laid out there. And again, last thing I do want to highlight is you will be seeing at some point soon, you know, an IT operations plan focusing cybersecurity is going to be continuing to be essential to what we do. And you can see the work that's being done continuously. And again, protect the district's interests, protect, you know, the integrity of our students and staff personal information against external threats. So appreciate that. But Zayad, if you want to maybe add before we can do some questions?
Thank you. Thanks, Hugh. Thank you for the time. It's a real pleasure to take the opportunity to highlight the work of the IT department to the board. We'll go through the information sheet. We have 120,000 lines of codes we could show you. I just simply really want to take you up to do recognize the work of the IT department staff. They worked hard over the summer as they do throughout the year. Again, most of what they do is behind the scenes. It's not as visible. Unless something goes wrong, it becomes quite visible. But it's really, and it is what enables teaching and enables learning and enables the operations of the district. I do definitely want to thank Mr. Walsh, Ms. Gray and the senior district leadership for the support of our work. And sometimes more importantly, even keeping us focused on the work that matters. And really thank you, thank to the various departments. Everyone from Facilities Operations and HR and Finance and Learning Services, of course. And especially shout out to the school staff, the administration at the school and the sports aspect. Because there's a lot of collaboration that occurs, a lot of consultation occurs, a lot of feedback we get from them as to what really matters and what's important to them. So we'll thank them for their, for supporting the work that we undertake. So the projects and activities in the information sheet in front of you, it's not just systems maintenance and upkeep. You know, there was a time not too long ago, a few years ago, in fact, where the work of an IT department in a typical school district was refreshing iPads and computers and labs and servers and doing a refresh or a roll over the information systems. If you go through the list now, if you can interpret it on that, please excuse me for the complexity of the language in the, in the list. But just going through it, it's just clear that most of the work is really about improving the way technology is delivered and the quality of the technology and the amount of technology that's delivered in the schools. So again, I'm just proud of the team and really pleased to have the chance to share with you the results of their efforts. Thank you. And any questions, please?
Thanks, Chair. Thank you, Zayad. Just for the benefit of everyone who might be watching and staff and trustees, we sort of have a rough idea of what Facilities does in physical handling. Go to or visit or build structure. With IT, a lot of us kind of can't wrap our wires around it. Could you give us a 30-second rundown of a busy day in your department?
Well, the.
You can announce if you want.
Chair, well, today was a busy day. Startup is probably the busiest time of year, not probably, it's by far the busiest time of year. And there's, and depending on what team you're doing, you're occupied or preoccupied with any number of things, sometimes distinct from what the team next to you is doing. So startup activity includes things like the vast amount of onboarding or access. You know, we've got low concentration coming into the, into the schools, for example, or do you specialize in alternate roles? And each one of them needs everything working, but not just everything that you use, it's everything that they need in their role. It might be asked to a specific function inside of the student information system that allows them to look up certain types of students and certain types of designations, for example. We have to be really fine-tuned into understanding what that role is and being able to integrate our systems in such a way that very quickly we're turning around the access that they need. It might be, you know, the example I will give you is similar with Rutherford. You know, a lot of people look at Rutherford openly and they see buildings, see artwork and they see, you know, infrastructure like plumbing and network and things like that. Oh, and IT sort of taking on the project of getting Rutherford activated in May, we listed out, all of our teams got together, we listed 65 separate activities, sorry, separate clusters of activities that needed to be completed before the next staff member would walk in and office, for example. And each one of those activities required planning, coordination, sometimes building a new system, right? So it really is very, I'm not asking all the questions. So it's not just about getting an iPad out of a box and, and running it through the sequence to get it working, connects to Wi-Fi. That one activity takes a whole bunch of backend infrastructure to actually allow that to happen, right? And you're right, it's not in your face, it's not visible, it's not something that you see, you know, what's behind, you know, enabling that service or the technology. And, and a lot of it is coordination with other departments and teams, members inside the team as well.
Thank you, Zayad.
Thank you for the question.
Thank you for joining us tonight, Zayad. You're right, it's something we just take for granted until it doesn't work. And then, and then we're trying to email someone on a computer. I had a couple of questions and trying to connect it to what Pete's been sharing with us and the different kind of infrastructure. How big is your IT department? And how much of the work are we doing in-house? When we talk about, you know, Pete using less, contracting out less of the work? And how are we doing to recruit and retain the people to be able to do that work?
Well, we have just over 20 people in the department. And we have various teams. We have a field operations team. These are the technicians in the schools. We have an infrastructure team that does, you know, the backend services and networking at firewall security. We have a service desk or a help desk. We have a student information support desk. We have a software developer. We have a data analyst. And I would say most if not all the work is done in-house. The things that we pay for and we contract out, actually, it's, we do hardly any contract. It's usually third-party vendors we're buying, buying equipment from. Or for buying specialized software, you know, that requires a subscription, right? We'll pay for that. But there are very few actual people, humans involved that we're hiring ever. It's, it's very much an in-house operation. We're quite proud of that. And I think our staff take a great deal of pride, sometimes maybe too much pride. They can solve it on their own. They don't need help from outside. And that's a good quality.
And how are you doing, how are we doing recruiting and retaining those talented?
I think the district, like most other school districts in BC and public sector are feeling the pressure of being able to attract the best clients and retain the best, sorry, employees and best customers, you know. Wages are decent, but we don't necessarily, we're not, we're not, we're not Google and Amazon. We're not hiring people that, that can demand those kinds of wages that they do, right? But most of our, our staff in IT are, they have a home in Anamal that they've been here for a long time. And they're very proud of being able to give their service back to the community in terms of, you know, service. And that's one of the biggest, I think, rewards they get working for a school district. You know, especially the folks in, knowing that you're serving teachers and more fully serving kids, I think, is a big, big reward that you don't find a lot of other, a lot of other places.
Oh, thank you. Keep up the great work.
Again, it's difficult to hire, but we do a pretty good job, I think.
That's great.
We have great people on staff.
Tom has some of the questions, but the other one I was wondering about, like, is around servers. Does all the, every school have a server or do you have a central spot for servers?
Every school does have a server.
Yeah.
But there are various roles that are being conducted in the, in the schools for the servers. We also have a pretty dense, central fleet of servers that do a lot of shared services as well. But every elementary has one little server that'll do certain numbers of things that they just can't get away with without one. You have a high school that might have higher demand on things like student file storage or staff file storage. They might have a server that does more things. And a lot of the applications that require a higher amount of bandwidth may not be able to deal with a remote server. And they have to have something local to be able to, you know, to provide that quality of service at that location. But every school does have at least one.
Good share of staff. So thank you, Zayad, your staff. It's interesting in the sense that both IT and Facilities are kind of so important, but behind the scenes. You know, without IT department, our, our staff and our students wouldn't have the enriching experiences that they do otherwise. And I guess I'm coming to my question. You know, given the fact that we're a mid-sized district, but still a fairly large employee player, how many devices do you think that we have to look after in IT? Like, do we have a sense, like, is it, are we the, like, tens of that? Like, what?
Yeah, yeah, we have. I wish I had my nose in front of me. We have approximately 7,000 procs. We have approximately 3,000 iPads. We have 2,000 computers. And we have dozens of servers. We have hundreds of switches and network, and network switches. We have dozens of firewalls. We have a lot of devices.
Yeah, and it just goes to show you, you know, if the average computer would expect a lifespan, you know, five years maybe. That's a lot of replacement. So yeah, just thank you for keeping the system going.
Thank you.
All of us relying on the work that you and your team. All of us relying on the work that you and your team.
Um, I go what others have said too. Again, it's the backbone of our ability to teach your students. If we didn't have that, we wouldn't, we'd be on paper. I mean, I'll say I'm a school. Um, my question is on a scale of one to 10, how was upgrading those thousands of computers to Windows 11? 10 being the best.
In about a year.
Okay. Yeah.
Yeah, it's uh, sorry.
Yeah.
It's going well. Uh, it could go better. Uh, it could go a lot worse.
Indeed. Yeah. Yeah. Thank you. I know our computers got updated already.
Alright, seeing no other questions. Thank you so much for uh, your presentation and answering all of our questions. Really appreciate it. And we're moving on to item 13 from the six.
Welcome to sneak hour.
Okay, uh, thank you Chair. So uh, she's the part of you this evening is two revised administrative procedures. Uh, and so they're both related and now, so a couple of, a couple of important points is, is ones, the board has changed it to the appeal by law. And so in accordance with that, the appeal AP has shifted as well. Uh, it shrunk to a certain extent because of the, the board bylaw addresses so much of what's going to be dealt with at, at, at the end of the day. A couple of important things. One, addressing parent complaints is also strong to try to make it usable. To try to create a distinction between what used to be done. So we used to read this AP that said appeals and formal complaints. Well, there's no formal complaint kind of anywhere in legislation as an example. And so we would never envision an individual being able to complain about teacher's practice as an example, or you know, so, something that maybe happened at recess, they didn't quite like the way it was dealt with. Like that's a complaint, not a decision that's appealable up, up to the board level. So we wanted to make it clear that there's an avenue still to, to do that and respect the idea that you're supposed to go back to the person closest to your concern. So that was, that's the complaint. And it got put next to, and that's why I like the new uh, uh, framework. Is because now you get to go, oh, is it this or is it actually an appeal under the school act, which is left the board bylaws is, is dealing with. And of course the board can take any issue it suits fit. And so that's the first two things. The, the second thing is, is in addition to the, to make it more simplistic, under 502.2, the AP appeals under the school act. We've just taken the language of the board's uh, bylaw and adapted that and then tried to walk through this process as clear as possible. And then when you get to page 179, we think this is going to be the most useful document that you're going to see available to, to parents as well as to principals. So hold on, 179, yeah, 179 and 180. So it's, it's this fillable form and it asks you to tick a box. What are you appealing? And if, if it's suspension longer than 10 days, it's all of those things that are appealable. And then if it's something other you're going to describe it. Uh, and so it's very, very clear. The other thing that we tried to do is the question, I think that will help us is what is the results you're hoping for? Uh, and to try to be very clear again. So number one, it focuses the conversation at the principal level and then, and then the director level and assistant superintendent level. But then it also focuses that hopefully by the time it gets to the board, where we're not asking parents to kind of come up with exactly what they're, they're going to want to, to have. And then finally, there's a document and I actually want to be clear, we had a couple of comments already about maybe a few additional items that should have been added to it. But the document, that's the uh, what have, what can you expect at the board? We've actually made a couple of changes that we've incorporated into the agenda that's online. Um, that the one that if it's printed that you got last week and you printed the last week, one was a couple of minor changes that were clarifications that were quite about to us. Uh, and so we think this distinction is, is going to be quite helpful. We're hopeful it's clear to parents what, what can they can expect. We've already had some feedback from some principals that have gone through this process. Cause last year we saw a rise in kind of school-based appeals that were just complaints. That, that principals have, have had some positive feedback on the, the kind of clarity and simplicity of it. So, um, yeah, so happy to answer any questions. Uh, and of course tweaks will happen uh, as we, you know, we should go through the experience, but that we, we're hopeful that this is going to be a positive document for both uh, parents as well as for, for principals and ultimately when it gets to the board.
My actual question, but now that you said it, where are the changes? Where would we see the changes?
So if you open, if you open online and open our agenda.
Not the one that, that we, we get emailed to us from last?
No, the one that's actually posted on, online. The what is on, what is in page 103, the one that was sent to you? If you open the HTML, I mean, number six, appeals, what to expect? That document is slightly changed. So I'm quickly looking. So the first one is uh, the board chair in the document that you, you have says the board chair will then adjourn, pause the meeting. You will then be asked to step out. The board will determine if they require further clarification. It's written now, the board chair will then adjourn during the meeting. You will be asked to step out of the meeting. District staff, not including the superintendent, will also step out. Boards will determine whether they require further clarification, yourself or staff. You and the district staff will then be asked to return and the board may ask questions, not will. That's an important distinction. Often the opportunity to provide closing remarks. Uh, and then um, we've we've adjusted it to match the school act and we sent a letter with the Board of Education sent from the Office of the Secretary of Treasury within a reasonable time. So this very minor tweaks, but it, it was mandatory that the board was going to ask questions. And that sets a weird expectation because if the board doesn't ask a question. So that was, was the main part. So really not much different, but just.
So I guess I'll ask my question and I'll get back on the, the list here. Um, it's actually, it's that part there. You bring up a good point. It says, um, you will then have 15 minutes to present your reasons for the appeal. Um, but don't staff then also, um, like, uh, have a presentation as well? I think that part might be.
The, the district staff will then have the opportunity to present information. Oh, sorry. Was that, was that?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry. Yes, that, that's been adjusted already.
Fantastic.
Thank you for the comments that, that came back.
Um, it is about, and um, I have a question about the appeals, uh, step four. Okay, so uh, this family, um, she was through all the steps. It, and it feels like they, just to clarify, they agree, they send the paperwork to the appeals um, at sde68wc.ca. Um, so do they have to keep, like, they, they fill this out? And they, they send it in? They hand it in? It has to be emailed, correct? Only? Or can they, they, they hand it in? As well?
Uh, I think we've only ever envisioned them. I don't, have never been handed, Karen, I don't think we've ever received a physical copy.
Yeah.
If, I mean, if that was a concern, we would accept it, but.
Totally. Okay. So yeah, if you're emailing it, I was just thinking like, okay, I may need to remind families to give a copy of this. Um, so that they, for the next step, they can have that paperwork with them. I was wondering if they have to do that for that purpose. Sorry, I'm a little old school. I do everything by paper still. Not everything, but um, something. So that's just something I was thinking about. Thank you. Um, can I just make a quick comment? I wanted to say that I really, really appreciate how this is laid out. Um, I know, uh, many families who have gone through this process and it can be a really hard, emotional process, um, to do. And having the questions, why do you want to appeal this decision? What is the result we're hoping for? These are great, um, questions to make folks think and get more focused on what it is that they're actually looking for. Um, because when we have a lot of emotions, sometimes our, you know, uh, we get very flustered and um, we perhaps say too much or not enough kind of thing. And um, I just really appreciate that felt that way. I think it also will help with the relationships, um, so that when we get clear on your idea, you need to get clear on what you're trying to say. Um, it's a little bit easier to have that communication with the next person in line. Um, and they can understand you better too. So, and that creates a lot less um, frustration and tension that might otherwise happen if you don't know where the process is and they don't know what's going on. And I really just really appreciate the hard work of staff and thinking about each individual component in this. It's, it's really great. Thank you. No other questions?
And I should just mention, I just want to recognize Jackie Poon's work in this. She was not here tonight, but she's probably still running somewhere. She far as, I don't know who, but uh, yeah, she, she really returns.
We've seen no other questions or comments? 15, 17, Mark?
Yeah. Sure. So just representing uh, the policy committee discussion, uh, work plan. And so you'll see it's not an action sheet because the board is going to be asked to pass the work plan in the next uh, motion. And so uh, that initial is just directly incorporated in that. So I thought that would be the convenient way of having the business be reflected. So what you'll see is uh, the work plan uh, for, sorry. Oh, sorry. You know, what we've done, and I apologize to jump forward a little bit. In the board work plan, we've incorporated all the committee work plans.
Oh.
Okay. So if you go to page 202 and 203, it's actually the policy committee work plan. I has been, is incorporated in the board. And so you'll see what we're trying to do is set a clear uh, kind of accountability mechanisms, at least for the first, you know, things change as the year goes on. And so you'll see the work plan was the first meeting. And then what we want to do is take essentially what you're going to see is every policy that didn't get done last year plus two additional policies have been added. Um, and that's what I'll, I'll go through. So, but a couple of things to note. One, our original education, that had been given out to kind of ask learning services to, to address. But now what's going to happen is I've dropped priority populations and Robin are going to and myself will help the policy committee get that structure, have that initial conversation, get it going so we can come back two months' time with the draft and have that kind of accountability. It's been there for about six. It's been there my entire time with that I was with as a priority. And so that's why it's been brought back to the policy committee and kind of reincorporated. Uh, trust the election by law. There's some changes to legislation that we need to reflect in the bylaw. And there's a couple of things that Karen and I have noted that probably need to tweak prior to the next election. We want to do it with plenty of time for consultation and plenty of time in advance of the next election. Personnel practices directly stemming from uh, the poll, the policy framework. And so again, Sean, our certain human resources is going to join, join to, to help through, through this process and then force comeback. So the line, if it's going to be coming out with employee laws, et cetera, the idea that here's personnel practices is going to be associated with that theoretically. Uh, continuous improvement assessment instruction. Another one that's been on the books to do for five years. Bringing it back to the policy committee to be the main kind of fund of it for that. Uh, and then you'll see starting in January, it's a little bit less. Uh, we're not so structured yet. But importantly, if the board is uh, supportive of it, the idea also that superintendent has been, as we've been talking about, is making sure that we have forward orientation for next year. And so to have the policy committee involved in that work along with the superintendent and Secretary of Treasury's office to have that ready and go through that committee. Uh, and then you'll see it's tied very well with some important policies of role of superintendent uh, et cetera. So just a couple of things to note. And then the final additional one is employee safety and wellness. That's a new policy that's got a whole bunch of APs that are already embedded underneath it. And if employee uh, wellness is uh, a core goal, it seems appropriate to prioritize the policy. So an ambitious work plan would suggest, but uh, doable with those kind of strict accountabilities in there. Things will change. New policies might need, need to arise, but um, happy to answer any questions or if any of the policy committee want to chime in. But ultimately, again, you're not voting on this, you'd be voting on it as part of the overall work.
Uh, I could just add, the word Mark, I said I'm on the policy committee and um, I think uh, what we see here is important work as it adds to our overall um, policy that we've been working on, we've been working on for the last three years. Now, some of these policies are quite significant that you see on this work plan. So it's a little bit ambitious, but um, confident that we can get it done.
Thank you very much, Mark. And so we're moving on to new business now, item 14. At 14.1, we're going to have somebody you need. He's like, no, that's going to be Mark Gold. Uh, uh, the board annual work plan.
Should ask Karen to present the question. So again, according to policy, the board requires a, a work plan that it passes um, each year. And so you'll see these 189, the strategic directions committee and uh, the, the various, you know, focuses uh, of September, regular board reminders and updates. So we go through the year, September, October, November, et cetera. You will see uh, items that uh, trustees have expressed interest in. You will see statutory required items. You will see con- continuity from, you know, previous issues that are being brought back. You will see reflection of board motions. Uh, so everything should be reflected here again. So the idea is, is if someone is interested in a topic, we're very hopeful that it's reflected here now. Um, so, so we have this kind of plan that we can have 10 months of planning essentially to be able to come to the board and the board knows what's coming. So if you're interested in X, okay, I can wait that two months because I know it, it's coming. So that, that's one of the important things to know. Um, you'll see the major initiatives that are there, the LNS planning, the, the NGS advocacy, uh, and as required that issues. Long-range stewardship and sustainability, that started to pass by the board earlier in the evening. Jedi ad hoc has already been passed by the board, I believe in spring. Policy committee is, was just discussed. There's one missing. That's the long-range facilities plan committee and that will be coming back to the board after the first OMP committee has been met here coming up in October. So I will answer any questions. Uh, the role of.
Can I make a question?
Yes.
The Board of Education of State Number 17 and our ladies will adopt the annual board work plan for 2025, 2026.
I think that if we've discussed this a few times as well later, we have a plan. Now it's time to work the plan.
Any other comments or questions?
Yeah, better process. When you look at all these committee work plans and I realize they're different, but maybe you could explain why they're different and why um, QP and TTLC doesn't belong, doesn't have a work plan? That because they just kind of deal with things as they merge between the, those two groups? Or is it? Do you know what I mean? Do we ever devise a work plan for those committees?
We have not devised a work plan for those, those committees. I mean, the, the structures and the collective agreement kind of lay out how agendas are set, et cetera. So.
Okay.
So no, I mean, I would expect that you should probably, some of the policy committee work as an example may be able to anticipate what you might want to bring into one of those committees to discuss.
I don't know. There's never been a, for those. Okay.
See no other questions? Um, or comments?
I'm just going to follow up on what Tom did, but that's okay.
Okay. Uh, called question. All those in favor? Should this carry? It looks like there's no, I'm interested in this. More information. Sixteen point one, there's the board motions report on page two hundred and four. Sixteen point two, trustee committee report something to two hundred and five.
Hi, Chair. I just, uh, if we have an opportunity to speak on the trustee committee reports real quick.
Uh, yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. Um, I wrote a report uh from, you know, the Bible hospice. They made a presentation to the Chamber of Commerce and there's a resource in that I that kids can use. It's called the library. What we don't know is that beyond our public library system and beyond any other libraries that we have, say at V I U or, you know, community libraries in the neighborhood, hospice also has a library. And it's a tremendous resource for students that are experiencing grief. And we have a memorandum of understanding for the district uh with hospice that helps connect that because unfortunately, uh, sometimes children have trauma and grief. And this is a resource that I would encourage all parents and guardians and teachers and staff to direct uh for kids that need it because they say, I'm told, that it's underused. It's quite well used, but it's still underused compared to, um, but it could be. And I think it's a resource that would help kids. So I just want to share that verbally and also to my report. So thank you, Chair, for my indulgence.
Thank you. Uh, just before, um, Tom, I I think I need to interrupt and just ask for the charge of my charger back. My battery in my fridge might have this deep tolerance.
Yeah, if I can, Chair. I just want to thank Dusty Robinson. His words, I'm fine. I walk through them. Um, the hospice grief counseling has been instrumental in my family's recovery over the years. And I just find out that they have services for kids. It's really something that we should be letting our staff know about. That's fantastic. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Mark, for sharing that. Uh, all right, uh, question period. Do we have any questions? No. So we move on to adjournment. Uh, somebody will pick the motion to adjourn me. Uh, Tim, in second, by Chantel. Um, that I adjourn me, but the meeting be adjourned. Always in favor? Maybe it's adjourned.